All right, I want to call the meeting order. Seven twenty-two is my time. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to our special meeting, May 20th. For attendance sign, we have all board members present except for Mr. Mann in a work commitment. Good to see everybody out there. I hope you had a good day and a little louder, okay? A little louder. Here's give me the up sign, so with that, we will move to our pledge allegiance, so please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever to be judged against for all.
Thank you. So next, I see that Lily and Katie did sign on, so why don't you give us the latest update? How are you guys doing?
Good, how are you? So lately, we've been doing, we've been keeping up with doing some different Instagram challenges to keep the students involved. So we've been last, I think last, at the last meeting, we talked about how we were doing a spirit week where they could post pictures from school, their favorite school event, or maybe their favorite first day of school picture. And that went really well. We had really high involvement for that, so we're optimistic that we'll have just as high, if not higher, involvement for future challenges that we're going to be doing on our Instagram. So the next thing that we'll be doing with that is, over the past few weeks, we've been having some teachers from Columbia send in baby pictures or pictures from when they were really young, and we're planning on having a guess who challenge on our Instagram, so students can guess which teacher it was. And then I'll hand it over to Katie. Thank you.
Yeah, and then just our biggest concern with this whole virtual thing has been how we're going to do elections for the officers for the next coming year. And at our last meeting last week, we decided that we're going to have virtual elections through a Google form, and those will be held on June 4th and 5th. And that's it.
Great. Now, did you guys get your visit today before you came around for seniors?
Oh, yes, I got, I had the person come to my house. I really enjoyed it. Thank you to everyone that was involved in that. That was really great to see.
Thanks, ladies. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Now, moving to the public forum, a reminder that being virtual, we have an email system set up, so if you have a comment for the board, please use the email system. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns in the public forum. If a response is inappropriate, the present or superintendent will contact the individual in their future. Those persons wishing to address the board with a record but a chair of the meeting should state the record, her name, address, or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitor's form is not deemed to be open. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. Any remarks which may be considered defamatory or estigmatizing are prohibited, declared out of order. So if you have any comments, please send them to the BOE email. And typically, in our meetings, we get comments at the second public forum, but no comments yet. So let folks kind of listen to the meeting, and hopefully have some comments regarding the budget and conversations for today later in the meeting. As far as the board members, do you have any initial comments? Kind of all over the place on my screen here, so I'll just kind of put it out there. John, Deanna, Jennifer, Kathleen, Karen.
Hey, Mike, I just wanted to give a shout out to Joanne and thank her for organizing the parade for all the seniors. And I also wanted to give a thank you to the Hilton family for their donation for the backpack program. That was all.
Great, thank you, Karen. Michelle or Joanne?
I'd just like to take a minute to thank the community. It was a huge team's effort to get the parades underway from transportation to our police, fire, sheriffs, state police was there. It was just amazing, the fire, every fire department. In fact, one of the fire departments today came to me at the end of the parade, was not scheduled to be in the parade tomorrow, and said they had such a good time, could they please come back tomorrow? The community support was just unbelievable. It's just so gratifying to see a community come together like this.
Great, great comments. Thank you, Joanne, and thanks for your involvement in putting that together with the community and foundation, everyone who participated. Anyone else? No? Okay, so we'll now move to our discussion item, and kind of a big part of why we're here today is the 2020, 2021 budget and the presentation. I'll turn over to Mr. Bruno. So can everyone hear me okay?
Over the course of the last couple of weeks, as we've been monitoring what might be happening at the state level, we've been uncertain as to whether or not we would receive information indicating that the state would be adjusting our state aid. As we reported at previous board meetings, the state, when they finalized the state budget, they were able to use some of the stimulus monies that had been provided to the state in the initial couple of programs provided by the federal government to offset any potential state aid cuts. So we did receive a pandemic adjustment in the final state budget. The impact of the state budget on our district's budget was about a net $25,000 loss in aid. So at that point, we were not concerned about the overall impact. However, at that time, we were also informed that there will be a measurement period in which the state would indicate they may adjust our state aid. The first measurement period has now come and gone, and we have yet to receive any information that our state aid has been reduced. Initially, additionally, we have also been monitoring what the governor has been saying about the need for federal assistance for state and local governments, and the need to utilize monies to be appropriated to the state so that police, fire, emergency personnel, and teachers can be supported in the state budget. And we were anticipating around May 15th that he would make an announcement that our state aid would be impacted, but instead, he chose to take a path of a more aggressive effort towards lobbying for New York State to receive additional federal funds. So at this point in time, as we work to support the budget to the community, we are being as cautious and conservative as possible. And as I move to the formal budget presentation, cautious and conservative means we want to be able to have a budget that can support the needs of our students, whatever those needs may be and however those needs may have changed, as students have been engaged in online learning for approximately three months. In the event that we reopen in September under typical conditions, we anticipate that class sizes may need to be adjusted. We also anticipate that the social emotional needs of our students may have become more significant, and we want to have room within our budget to be able to address those needs. Additionally, on the other side of being conservative, we anticipate that we could at any time between now, over the summer, or even into the new school year, receive information from the state indicating that our state aid would be reduced. We just don't know when that will occur, whether it will occur, and how much that state aid adjustment might be, with the projections having been between 10% and 20%, depending what happens with federal revenues appropriated towards the state. So at this time, we need to adopt the budget because we have a vote date of June 9th. And as I move into the presentation, there have only been some small adjustments to the budget that the board has previously received and seen and has been presented to the community. We did take a look at the items that were funded within the budget, and we felt that it was important to forego the equipment purchase of the furniture. So the overall budget number has been adjusted down about $10,000 from March 11th. It proposed a $99,788,001 on March 11th. We've adjusted that down just slightly, removed the furniture, until the proposed budget, which the board adopted this evening, would be $99,778,12, which represents budget to budget increase from this year to next year of about 4.02. And as we had indicated at previous meetings, a large portion of that increase is associated with our capital project, conversion of short-term borrowing to long-term borrowing on projects that have been previously done, which we pay interest. Additionally, a large portion of that adjustment are changes that have been made because we have increased some services to BOCs for students who want to attend BOCs, as well as an adjustment that was related to the ad hoc reserve issue that was addressed on a long-range plan a few years ago. All in all, the budget has been adjusted to a 1.5% proposed impact on our tax levy, which is under the New York State tax cap for East Green Bush, which is currently 1.62%. On page three, the numbers are reflected in the adjustment to a $99,778,12 proposed budget. On page four, we see the breakdown of how the tax levy is calculated. We removed the expenses of $10,000. We have reduced state aid based on the final state budget. We reduced the state aid by $25,000. We add that $25,000 of additional revenue back into the tax levy to offset that state aid reduction. We have an adjustment in our pilot revenues moving from this year to next year. We project that that adjustment will be $348,242, as we will be receiving less money in pilots next year, so we have to subtract that amount from the tax levy. If your pilots are increasing from one year to the next, you have to reduce the tax levy by a comparable amount. Additionally, we had to discuss with the board at a previous meeting, using monies that had been set aside in a reserve to unspent budget of about $900,000 to offset that expense for employee retirement payments next year. Again, we're using monies that were not spent within the budget and appropriating it towards an expense which will offset the tax impact of our proposed budget for next year. And additionally, we received some revenues projected for next year for retiring prescription reimbursement of about $200,000. So all in all, the proposed tax levy would yield to the district next year $58,374,456, which yields about $66,620 less in revenue in our budget next year than what we could if we were to go all the way up to the tax.
Can anyone still hear me?
In addition to the proposition, the proposed spending plan for next year, voters will see additional propositions on June 9th. The district has been very successful at implementing a replacement plan for its bus fleet through utilizing reserves that have been both authorized by the board and the community. You may recall that reauthorization occurred last year because we had successfully met the threshold for closing out the existing reserve. We have a proposal for the purchase of eight school buses. All of those buses would be purchased out of the reserve, which would save principal and interest payments on borrowing that the district would otherwise need to do to purchase the buses. We have evaluated those purchases this year, and we really feel that the total number of buses that we want to maintain in the fleet is critically important now, as we don't know exactly what changes might happen next year in terms of our bus routes, particularly if we have to have fewer kids on a bus. Additionally, we are still in the process of studying our high school start time, and we think that we would potentially have an impact for a need of buses, additional buses. So this plan would enable us to have buses that have more efficiency, fuel efficiency, are more modern and safe. The average age of the buses that we intend to trade in and replace is about 10 years, nine to 10 years, and those buses have, are pretty close to their estimated lifespan. So we're recommending to the board that that proposition for use of the reserves to purchase eight school buses goes forward, although we did evaluate it. Additionally, we have the election of three school board members, and those three school board members are our current incumbents, and our board president, Michael Puno, our board vice president, Mark Mann, and our board member Kathleen Curtin, all incumbents. There were no other candidates for the board election, and those names, in accordance with the modified rules for the election, will appear on the ballot in alphabetical Typically, at this time of year, actually, it would have been yesterday, I think, that we would have actually had the vote, right? Okay, so we haven't had the vote yet, and typically, we'll be celebrating tonight and approving and accepting the vote. Here, we're just proposing the budget for adoption by our board because the date was changed to June 9th. No regulations have been provided to schools this year indicating whether or not there would be a second bite at the apple, so to speak. Typically, when the budget goes out to the voters and it is voted on in the third week of May, you typically have a date in June in which if the budget had failed in May, you can go back out with either the same budget or a modified budget, or even go to a contingency budget. This year, the answer among many questions is, we don't know. We have received guidance from our law firm and school boards association to assume that we will only have one bite at the apple, and therefore, we need to make sure that everybody gets the word about the budget vote and that those ballots come back via mail. If we are in a situation where we would be forced to go to a contingency budget, the district would not be permitted to raise taxes at all, and we would have to take a look at reducing our overall spending by the amount that we otherwise would have raised through the 1.5% tax levy, which is approximately $863,479. We've listed here on page seven, excuse me? Oh, I'm, sorry, I'm talking faster than I'm clicking. On the next slide on page seven are a list of non-mandated programs, but as we have said in the past, just because the state doesn't mandate them doesn't mean that they're not important to the community. Our community has expectations for its school district to offer such things as full-day kindergarten, as honors and AP courses. We've made a concerted effort over the last several years to increase the number of college credit courses that we offer for our college and high school program. More important than ever, they've always been important, but our school's social workers who provide counseling services and social emotional support for kids and families, we believe that they are critically important. However, they are not mandated by SED regulations, along with athletics and other services that we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to have to reduce within our budget, not offered to the community because we go to a contingency. For example, over the last couple of years, our board has made strategic decisions, put the district in a good position to provide for the academics, and I think in part, the community will hear at the hearing on March 27th. We think in large part, our fiscal plans have been responsible to the taxpayers, but also advance the district. We are the third highest graduation rate in the capital region. We offer more than 25 college credit courses at our high school. We enjoy far above the state average performance on all of the indicators, and this year, our high school, as well as Red Mill School, were selected to be recognition schools and reward schools. So we're doing very well, and our spending plan, as we proposed to the community, and hopefully, we don't have to go to a contingency, even in uncertain times, reflects board's priority, continue to advance our district academically, and to meet the community's expectations. We talked a little bit about the bus reserve. Just to break it down a little bit, we plan to replace 466 passenger buses at a cost of $459,000, 235 passenger buses at a cost of $136,000, 130 passenger bus at a cost of $80,000, and a 22 passenger bus at a cost of $60,000. Eight buses at a total cost of $736,700. Anyone in the community who is interested can take a look at a very specific transportation fleet bus replacement plan, which is available on our website, under the budget finance portion of the website. It's all there for you to see the dates of the buses that we're trading in, the age of the buses, and it's pretty well detailed to the community. The community has gotten, grown accustomed to this plan of using reserves to purchase buses. One of the things we continue to emphasize is, in addition to addressing student safety, our transportation fleet has one of the best Department of Transportation ratings in New York State in terms of its safety. We use the bus replacement plan to make sure that our buses that have high mileage are traded in and we get a value in new buses. They save on operation and maintenance costs. Not only are we struggling to have, to find drivers for our buses, we have been able to fill some of the mechanics positions in our district, but it had been a challenge. So operation and maintenance of the buses, the fact that we will have newer buses alleviates that concern to some degree. And we get state funding for our buses. So for every dollar we spend to purchase a bus, again, out of money that has been saved, we get 65 cents back on the dollar, and that 65 cents on the dollar goes right back into the transportation reserve that we can use to purchase buses in the future, and it kind of replenishes itself to some degree. In addition to the board election, or three board members, the budget vote, and the use of the transportation reserve to purchase buses, we want the community to be mindful of our timelines. Here we are on May 20th, hoping after some discussion with our board that our board will adopt a budget. I'll be recognize that it is a very uncertain time, and there's a lot of things that we need to think about. On May 27th, we will have a public hearing on the budget. That will be a virtual hearing. Typically, that hearing would have been held at Howard Algauf Middle School, but that will be a virtual hearing, and we will have our budget vote on June 9th. And that will be done solely through paper ballot. We anticipate that the ballots, in addition to a postage-paid return envelope, will be in the mail and sent to all of the registered voters, eligible registered voters within the East Green Bush Central School District on or about May 29th. It is very important, for anyone who is listening, that folks receive those ballots, open their mail immediately, fill out the ballot completely, put it back in the envelope that has been provided by the district, and a critically important step is to sign the envelope. If individuals fail to sign the envelope, the district is not permitted to count the ballot. So we will be putting that out in our newsletter, we'll be putting that out on our website, we'll be talking with the PTOs in the community. It will be on our signs out on Columbia Turnpike. Very important that individuals sign the envelope. And we will have our vote on June 9th, and we will count the vote beginning at 5:00 or thereabouts, and we will continue to count until everyone is fatigued and/or we finish or we move into the next day. We are permitted to move into the next day, but we're going to do our level best to do as much counting as we can on the night of the ninth. Is that correct, Mr. Edson?
That's correct.
One thing I would advise the board is, we are going to hold off on filling positions that have become vacant in our budget, or that we anticipate additions, for example, the social worker position, the two elementary additional classrooms, plus any positions vacated by retirement. We are going to hold off on filling those at least until mid to late June because we want to monitor what might be happening with reductions in aid. The board is aware that we have also offered an expanded retirement incentive, which is now public information to our teachers, and at this point, that retirement incentive has not closed. It closes on Friday, and we have only received one additional notification of retirement. So we don't know where that will, where that will result, but we're still in the window of accepting those retirements. Thank you.
So back to the record screen, and have some conversation of the board. As Mr. Simon said, we've been discussing the budget at least a couple of months now. We've got, we've made some decisions around reserves and other items. Do you have the budget to that 145% tax levy? So was there any comments, board members, on the budget at this time for Mr. Simons, Mr. Edson, or general comments?
Mike, I have a comment.
John?
First, I'd like to thank the administrative team for putting together a budget in these uncertain times. It's a very difficult planning period, but I support the overall budget and the philosophy towards it, that we are still trying to make some semblance of normalcy in these very difficult times. And Jeff liked your comment about some of the pending job allocations in the budget, but being cautious in your approach, I think that's prudent. So you have my support and thanks, you know, Larry and all your team for being very thoughtful in these very difficult times. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Any other comments, board members?
Mike, I just want to echo what John said as well. It's very challenging to even start to think of what the budget's going to look like in these crazy times. So I appreciate the conservatism that we have to make sure that we're being accountable the best we can on the uncertain times with the state aid, and I also support the budget.
Thanks, Michelle. Kathleen?
I also want to echo Michelle and John. I support the budget 100%. You can't pick up the newspaper without reading about the devastating cuts that so many other districts are going through right now, so I really want to say thank you for working as hard as you did. I guess not getting as much state aid is actually kind of a blessing in disguise right now, because when they cut the little bit that we got, the cut's not quite as deep. So that's not something we want to continue, but it is going to help us at least a little bit this year. So thank you for working so hard.
Thanks, Kathleen. Anyone else?
I too. Just want to thank everybody for all the hard work and dedication you guys have put in through this year and all the challenges. So I too support the budget and echo what all of my colleagues have said. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Deanna?
I just want to say that I think it's a very solid budget, and I think we're very fortunate to be in the position that we're in.
Thanks, Deanna. Anyone else? Jennifer, good?
I was just going to say the same, and I don't want to repeat what everybody said, but I do want to pass along my deepest appreciation to everybody who's been involved in that process and pulling it together. It is extremely difficult times, so thank you so much, and I too support what we're doing and how we're moving forward.
Excellent. And I know I talked to Mr. Mann earlier, and he is worried about the budget as well. Later on in the agenda then will be, the resolution is on the board's agenda for consent to approve the budget. And again, I want to thank the team for all their work, and remember that, you know, if something does come up, we're prepared for it, we'll make necessary steps. The district has been very fiscally prudent for many years, and with these kind of situations, this very difficult situation comes up, it puts us in a better position to be thoughtful, to be mindful, and to still continue to provide our families and students and staff the opportunities that they need to run the district and to maintain the excellence that we've worked so hard for, you've worked so hard for, in the community, as administrators, parents, teachers, students. So we want to continue that, whatever it looks like in the fall, we'll be able to adjust and do our best to maintain those things.
You know, I would like Mr. Edson to review the other report that is under the budget discussion, which is the revenue report.
Sure.
And also, Larry, can you talk a little bit about our general approach on balance next year in the event that we are close to the 4% or over the 4%?
The revenue report is a, the revenue report is a report that you've seen as part of the budget packet, and it's been adjusted according to the additional revenues that were shown in the Google slide presentation earlier. And it shows what the sources of revenue to support the expenses are in our budget by category. Page one is a quick summary, and then detailed accounts follow on pages two.
Page one is a quick summary, and then detailed accounts follow on pages two through five. And at the end, it shows the budget, the budget increase, that's slightly over 4%, and the tax increase projected at 1.5%. And what you see towards the end of the document is you show the application of our unbalance into the next year of approximately 6.8 million. There's also a transfer from the ERS Reserve for $900,000 to support the expense in the following year. In the last unbalance projection that was done for the Board of Education, we believe that we will have approximately 1.5 million, I think we had, could have been 1.4 million, that will be above that. And the hope is that we will retain that, we will retain that money to offset a portion or all of any state aid cuts that could occur in the following year. That's though without adjusting programs. Now, depending on the severity of the cuts, that might not entirely be possible, and so you may need to look at additional use of unbalance and/or reductions at that time. You just don't know. And so, that's the approach. And there was also another report, which you'll see later on in the agenda, which is related, and that is the property tax report card. And this is a required report to be sent to the state that outlines a comparison of budget year to year, along with the tax levy, and whether or not the budget is compliant with the state property tax cap. And it is also compared to our enrollment increase, our projected increase, which is consistent with the CDRPC projection report that the board saw earlier in the year, along with the change in the Consumer Price Index. And then there's a newer section that follows, newer section of the past couple of years of what are the components of our fund balance. And these are really of no surprise because the fund balance components and the projections at year-end match the fund balance projection that was just recently done. So, it's, so this is not a surprise. We talk about reserves typically early on in the fiscal year. We then talk about them again in October with the presentation of the financial statements. And we're talking about it again at this point during the budget process. So, again, it's not essentially new information, but it is a disclosure piece, and you'll see that parts of this property tax report card are extracted and then made part of the required budget notice, which people will see on page three of the newsletter, which will nail to most homes in the district on or about May 28th, immediately following the budget year. So, that is the, it's just a quick recap of the property tax report card and the revenue report.
Any questions regarding the two reports, revenue and the property tax card? No? And I think part of it is that we wanted to make sure, I mean, the way I look at this budget, it's not planning for just this year, we're looking at the future beyond this year. So, that's why it's important when we plan our budgets, look at our reserves, look at our spending, that we're thinking one, two years, even though we're dealing with one year of time. Our long-range planning is critical to this district to maintain those things long-term. If we're short-sighted and make cuts and do things that impact, the ripple effect is felt for years. So, I think it's important that we act, that we happen to adopt this budget.
I want to thank the board for its support for the budget. We really appreciate it. It's been, as I said, a very uncertain time period, and this budget, as we proposed to the community, is the best we can do with the information that we have available. The board is in the best position possible to have flexibility during the school year in the event that school is cut during the school year. We'll be able to adjust to it and react to it. So, thank you to the board for supporting it.
So, the next item on our discussions is a virtual meeting forum that was held last Thursday. Does anyone?
Yeah, I wanted to provide the board, I think not all the board members were able to participate in our community forum last Thursday evening. I view it as a tremendous success because we had a high level of participation. We used Facebook, or members of the community, majority of the community being our parents, to connect in on Facebook through a video livestream. After some initial glitches with the livestream dropping us, we were able to connect the community to a Zoom panel discussion, and a number of our administrators participated in that panel discussion. So, I want to thank those that participated. And we engaged a third-party vendor called Thought Exchange to do outreach to the community, find out what the key concerns were, and to prioritize those concerns. We had 273 individuals participate in the Thought Exchange. At one point, I believe the Facebook comments and likes were close to that mark, if not a little bit more. 175 thoughts were exchanged through Thought Exchange, and they were rated 9,345 ratings. Bubbling to the top were key concerns and questions about the calendar of the school year for the rest of the year, the online learning program, senior activities such as graduation. We tried to be as informative as we could based on what we know. We also responded to what-ifs in regard to what might happen next school year in September, what some of the considerations might be for reopening school, and any issues that we could respond to with as much information as we could. After the community forum and discussions with the members of the panel, which included Mr. Buno, and monitoring the Facebook comments, I would say overall, 95% to 97% of the comments were either positive or simply questions seeking information. So, I thought overall the response to what we did was very positive. We learned a lot from it. Thought Exchange provided us a report. We haven't yet to analyze it, but that report will include some tools that represent some of the most important thoughts of the community, some of the differences, kind of a high-low analysis, the questions that got the lowest ratings versus the questions that got the highest ratings, where some of the gaps might be. And we're going to continue to take heat maps in terms of hot issues that are out there versus the issues that may be cooler in their own temperature. So, it was a great tool to use. It was good to connect with the community. And at the end, I really had a sense that we were together, that the community was together despite some of the challenges. And I really feel that there's some important information that we can glean from the district and move forward on. I also think it provides us momentum going into the budget.
Yeah, that was very well done. I want to thank everyone again for their participation. Is there any comments, board members throughout the audience, maybe to discuss? See, Jennifer came up.
I was, sorry. I didn't know if I was going to lose connectivity, so I apologize about that. I thought it was excellent, you know, joining from, I had to join from my phone. So, it was, I thought, some great information, and I've been hearing wonderful feedback about it. So, thank you so much. Did it freeze?
No, you're good.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Anyone else? And I know the challenge is balancing the three platforms, Facebook, Zoom, and Thought Exchange. And I want to thank Peter and his team for working on that and Mark Adam as well for bringing that together. I think it was a good way to reach out to the community, give information, what we know, what we don't know, and then give people an opportunity to just participate in dialogue and connect again. And we missed those connections, I think Michelle, you said it very well, listeners and students.
Hey, Mike, just one comment if I could?
Sure, John.
Again, thank you for facilitating that. I think it's important that we continue this path that we're on in the name of transparency. I think it's really important that we get to the people in the medium that, at that particular time. So, maybe we can think about doing a follow-up forum after the budget vote. Hopefully, it'll pass. But just to keep people informed, I think it's, we could take advantage of everyone adopting their new comfort with technology and make that a regular practice for the future. Not that you don't have enough work to do already, Jeff. So, thank you again.
Thank you, John. Thanks, John. Any final comments? I like that.
I just want to comment, I think parents appreciate the openness, that if we don't know something, it's said that we don't know it. And they're patient, and they're willing to wait once they know that it's all up in the air. I think they appreciate that, and thank you for doing that, Jeff.
Welcome. Thank you, John. Great. Okay. There's no more comments. We'll move to our committee report section of the meeting. Marissa?
None at this time.
Redson? Just a reminder to the policy committee members to review their draft policies and get comments back by next week, please. Jim McHule, you out there?
I am. Just to report out that on Monday, May 18th, from 6:30 to 7:30, we had an online session for reducing anxiety in your child and in you. That was presented by Dr. Jennifer Bishant. 110 people, community members, registered for that session. 85 folks were logged in. And she talked about how anxiety thrives on faulty beliefs and contrary to what many people think, techniques such as distraction or avoidance really don't work. She encouraged people to really try to understand the root cause of their panic and dispute inaccurate thinking. She talked a lot about permanent versus temporary. She addressed and acknowledged the fact that many people were missing friends, missing routines, and fearful of getting sick. And she just talked about the importance of being able to bring on those feelings and acknowledge how you're feeling and trying to reframe your mindset. She talked about the importance of really seeking out accurate information. And then she ended with some strategies on dealing with some difficult times, and she talked about mindfulness and meditation, pretty well-received, got good feedback. And again, I think people are getting used to the online technology, and I was pleased that 85 community members logged in. I will have something finalized tomorrow for all of our district employees with Doc Bird, Steven Burcheck. That was our opening day speaker. He's going to do a check-in for district employees. And there's another session that we're working on about helping children and stay motivated. So, I'll continue to update the board and let you know how those things play out.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate all your efforts and putting those forums together and opportunities for parents and staff. Thank you.
Just Simon saying it? I want to talk a little bit about graduation. We had talked, spoken at our community forum about the fact that the district had been developing two plans for graduation, while we were waiting to assess what guidance, if any, we might receive from either the state education department, the Department of Health, the governor's office, and/or the county. As the districts, excuse me, as the regions are moving into reopening, today is the first day of Phase 1, as everyone knows, which involves construction and manufacturing and some curbside expansion of retail. We're continuing to talk about the graduation plans. We are engaged in conversations within the Questar Bozies about graduation options, and each week we meet with the county executive and the Department of Health. And we were hoping that continued guidance might flow to the school districts. We're being advised that that guidance may not come, or if the guidance comes, it may not be clear. So, we're still monitoring the situation, but at some point in time, we need to make a decision about what we're going to do. We're holding out because ideally, we're hoping and praying that the situation in terms of the phasing for our region, that people will become more confident and comfortable. And as the governor is announcing such things as permitting Memorial Day ceremonies with certain criteria for Memorial Day ceremonies and for religious observances, he is still citing the 10-to-1 groups, or excuse me, no groups larger than 10 ratio when he describes those activities that he will be permitting. So, at BAST, a live graduation ceremony on the turf would be our best option, in my view, because it would bring our kids back to our campus. At CHS, it would involve a diploma ceremony for kids in small groups. But when you count the number of children, even with the social distancing and masks and all of the other parameters and supervision we've put in place, you still would, in order to get the ceremony done in a reasonable time period, even if it were two full days, it would be far above the 10. So, we're hoping that things will loosen up quite generally over the next couple of weeks, and that we might receive more information to go with Plan A. Plan B was to use the model that has been talked about across the country, which is to have our graduates and their families go to the drive-in. We reserve the drive-in in Malta. We need to make a firm decision on that because the drive-in has waiting lists. We're going to need to make that decision within a few days. So, upon assessing all of this situation, we've had some conversations with the county executive, and we are working on a common framework for districts in Questar for which we could document our plans, have the county review our plans, give us some feedback through Craig Hansen and the Safety, Health and Safety Risk Management Service. County has indicated that they won't approve our plans, but that they would give us some assurances that we were on the right track. Additionally, we are going to do a survey that will come out to our parents tomorrow. That survey will be a quick Google survey that Mr. Harkin and Mr. Adam developed today that I approved. It will describe Plan A, it will describe Plan B, so that everybody understands what the plans would be and what the limitations of those plans would be. For example, the drive-in option does have some restrictions, and families have to remain in their car. It may not be the kind of socialization that maybe some of the kids or the families think could occur at the drive-in because of the restrictions that the state has on the drive-in. So, another option, which we're throwing out as a third option, is to do both. That if we need to reserve the drive-in by a certain date, we could have some kind of a senior family celebration at the drive-in. It may not necessarily take the form of a graduation. It could involve some of the videos on the large screen and some of the awards that our seniors receive and the recognition of the class, just a fun family time to celebrate the class. If we were to do that in June, reserve the date, and potentially delay a formal diploma ceremony a little bit later into July, would people be able to participate? And we're going to be asking them in that survey. We are concerned to some degree about delaying it too long because we have graduates who will have to report for military duty. And that survey will try to capture those families who would be impacted, who would not be able to participate if we were to delay it into mid-July. We would delay it to buy time for the phasing of the reopening to continue to occur, hopefully that the numbers that the state is monitoring regarding COVID-19 would continue to be favorable. There may be, there is a potential for a loosening of restrictions as people become more confident and less worried. And we want to do as much as possible to try to preserve a ceremony for our kids. And part of that... And part of that, part of that preservation would be hearing what the preferences of the senior class and their families would be through a survey that we plan to send out tomorrow. That's an update on graduation. It's still a very fluid situation. School districts aren't clear as to whether or not they have the authority to do the ceremonies that we've been planning. We're trying to work with each other to have a common framework for those ceremonies. Although they might differ by building, or excuse me, by district because of size and other considerations. And we're, we're trying to buy a little bit more time before we formally announce a decision so that we can hopefully keep our fingers crossed that the phasing of the reopening goes well and there is somewhat of a loosening of restrictions and/or more guidance coming our way. That's where it stands at this point.
Any questions for Jeff? I know it's great, I mean, we're trying to look at all options, right? Help people get to a place where they're, they're at least have some senior year celebrations and, you know, ending the year in a high note of some sort. And then, you know, balance that with the safety of our community and our parents.
One thing that was true is the parades and delivery of the signs is the kids and the families are really looking forward to something and they're really missing out. And it was really a good positive shot in the arm today and I want to thank Joanne because it really, it really brings some life into our senior class and their families have been worried about this. And it was really a reminder of how important a senior year is and to celebrate the senior year. And it kind of charged us up a little bit to really do what we could to continue to try to preserve a graduation as much of a graduation forum as we can, even if that meant a lag.
Thank you. Moving next to our agenda, we have the minutes from May 6th. All members were present, so any questions or comments or visions of the minutes? If not, any motion to approve the minutes? Jennifer, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Next on the agenda, regular business. There's none at this time. And then for course and presentations, we have the first item is the adoption of the budget for 2020, 2021. Any final comments, Mr. Simons, Mr. Redson? There's no comments, board members? I need a motion to adopt the budget? Kathleen, second. John, all those in favor? Approved. We'll see that at the hearing in another week. Thank you to the board. Welcome. The property tax card, Mr. Redson had mentioned that earlier in the meeting. Any final questions, comments on the property tax report card? No? If not, any motion to approve that? Deanna, I need a second. Can't see names. Karen, all those in favor? They're all in a little small area, so I'm just trying to ring their names at the same time. Forgive me. That motion is approved. No other reports and presentations at this time? So we have no table motions, old business, board members, any old business you'd like to bring to attention of the board? Kathleen?
I just want to say that since the last meeting, I did attend the webinar put on by the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. Leading with emotional intelligence in uncertain times. I know the emotional intelligence is something that Mr. McHugh has worked very hard on with the professional development and the entire district has worked with this. The webinar was excellent. Yale did mention that all of their programs are going online this summer. If anybody is interested and we have any professional development money. It was fantastic and I really want to thank Mr. McHugh for doing as much as he has, bringing this forward and working with the district with it. And anything else that we can do to further that would be wonderful.
Jennifer, yes, I can see her.
I was just going to say Kathleen and I was on that as well. And I've been following Mark and his work that he's been doing at Yale since the New York State School Board's conference a few years ago. And I shared out the information and resource follow-up email with Mr. Simons and Mr. McHugh in hopes that maybe some of those additional resources may be of use to the district. Because I too thought it was very relevant and meaningful and definitely is in support of all of the work that the district and Mr. McHugh have been doing in this particular area. So yeah, excellent, excellent presentation and hopefully those resources will be of assistance.
Okay, thank you Kathleen and Jennifer. Any other old business to attend to? Moving on to the consent agenda, items A through G. I think no instructional or non-instructural personnel items. We do have some gifts and authorizations, health service contracts, calendar change. Mr. Simons, you want to talk about that?
Well, this is another issue that is important to the community, both our families as well as our staff. We have reviewed our calendar from a standpoint of the number of days that we were required to have students attend school as well as our contracts regarding our employees. And we feel that based on our own local review, that we will meet all of the number of student attendance days and not exceed all of our employee obligations for the total number of contract days by ending the school year for students being the last day of instruction on June 15th. And the last day for staff would be the 16th, with the exception of certain 12-month employees who work beyond that calendar. We have discussed this with our respective bargaining units. We're all in agreement regarding the day count. As a reminder to the public, the governor extended the school closing periods through April 15th. The executive order required school districts to include instruction online for students during the spring break, including the religious observances of the Friday and Passover. That was six additional days added to the student attendance calendar if we were to go all the way to June 26th, which is our calendar as currently approved by the board, best day. The district would incur expenses associated with settling contractual issues with its employees if we do not make this adjustment. Additionally, our families have indicated that they could use a break and they would like some closure on when this school year is going to end. So based on all of that, I will be recommending through this resolution that the board is going to hopefully approve that student instruction stop at the end of the day on June 15th. Last day for staff to report will be a professional development day on the 16th. Subject to any adjustments that the state may come forward. So for example, if the board approves this this evening, we get an executive order tomorrow that says, no, 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 East Greenberg School District, you got to go all the way to June 30th. Then we will go all the way to June 30th and we will try to settle the labor issues that are presented by that. This is another issue where school districts, including our state advocacy organizations, have sought clarity from the state education department, the governor's office, and from others from which we have not received. So we are acting on the advice of council to make this adjustment this evening, subject to any further state mandates that may come down the line on our district that would cause us to have to change it again.
I think it speaks to really global control of school district calendars. Doing what's best for families, our students and our staff to give them a sense of plan, what the end of this school year looks like. So I think this is a prudent action again, like Mr. Simons said, subject to executive order or other kinds of items. Any other questions regarding the consent agenda items and all the calendar?
And one thing, the question has come up, what, what is our obligation to provide meals to students and what is our obligation for the childcare program for essential workers? It is our understanding based on the readings of the executive orders that those services until further notice are to continue through June 30th.
I support that. All right. If there's no other questions or comments, I need a motion to take those items by consent. Joanne, second. John, all those in favor? Second, Deanna, this approved. Thank you very much, board members.
We'll send a notice to our families tomorrow and to our staff on the calendar.
And I think that's consistent with a lot of the regions. Depending on whether calendars, closings and their schedules. Any new business that needs to come before the board, board members? We'll go to our second public forum. Is there any comments? There are no comments. Okay, so they like what we're doing, it's all right. So that's good. Fourth forum number two. Anyone, including administrators, I welcome some feedback or input from the administrators that are present at the meeting, would like to say anything? No?
Mike, this is, this is Mike Harkin. How are you?
Good, Mike, thanks.
Good. I just want to thank the Ed Foundation and the Transportation Department and all of the faculty and staff that participated in today's parade. It was really a special day.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? We do have a need for executive session for purposes of collective negotiations and climate history and some personal matters. So we don't, we don't have any business coming in after that executive session. So Mr. Gobin reminded me that there'll be a 10-minute break. We'll email the board members the link as we have done in the past. And I'll need a motion to go into executive session. Kathleen, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. And we will move to executive session. So thanks, everybody. Appreciate your attendance tonight. Have a great night, nice day, nice couple of days and we'll see you soon.